All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the council meeting, City of Nelson, May the 2nd, 2022. We'll have to call the meeting to order and have a word of prayer. See you when we get the honors.
Sure. Here in the Father Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and have this meeting, Lord. We just invite you to give us your wisdom, us understanding and knowledge. We pray that you would guide the city council meeting to know in Jesus' name.
James, would you like to?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can make a motion to approve the agenda for this evening, May 2nd, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Make a good second.
Second.
Jane, Dave, is that you?
Yeah.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We'll start with public appearance. Does anybody have anything with regards to the agenda that you'd like to speak about tonight?
Tonight's agenda is I've got the budget proposal and I had a couple of suggestions in regards to that. One was regarding hiring some professional consultants to do the website. Most cities contract out to some professional firm because it's somewhat technical. But that should be a, I don't know how much that should be, might look into that to do competitively with someone providing those services to the city. The second one was the, there should be some thought to approving an allocation of funds to help with the stormwater system, the maintenance that's been spoken about in the capital improvement plan. Specifically, there's a, this study that the county done prepared for us. They identified a whole series of drainage endless that were 100% full working order. But those need to be given some attention to as a public student expecting that the county's going to come and do it. We should just put together, hire some landscape people or stuff and find out what equipment might be necessary. I know I've done some cleaning up on Kennesaw over on Pickens and it's not that hard. It's just physical labor. That would be a second area that I think should have some attention. And then I had two other issues that are actually a little bit off of the last meeting of council on capital improvements. One was, and I don't know the facts on this, so I may be in error, probably am, the sanitation truck, what funds would we use to pay for that? Was that SPOSS funds? That should have been in the capital improvement plan. And now going forward, we figure out what the life of the existing truck should be. We start putting money aside to anticipate, and I don't know what the life of a sanitation truck is.
I don't know if you were here. We discussed it last meeting. Yeah, we discussed it in the last meeting. I don't know if you were here when that, it was a work session. So yes, we did talk about life cycles of equipment and how to get them on a rotation to move them out and bring them in.
Yeah. Well, it is, it's a SPOSS eligible thing, but it never showed up in our capital plan. It should have. That's all I'm saying. So now moving forward, we ought to anticipate it and try and build it into it.
Well, I think what happened with that was like we were going to use, we were going to use some of the CARES Act fund because it would cover it. But in order to unlock the funds, we ended up using it on Kennesaw Avenue to unlock and renew new funds. So it was, it was just a, it's just an oversight, but it will get added to the capital improvement. Matter of fact, we don't have a book out yet because we haven't voted on it, but it was, it was in our work session.
The other one, which I'm just repeating, is the stormwater project. We should take initiative and go clean those out.
So the county, I did a speak with Jeff Morton. The county is supposed to come back with a, to us with a, with an ETA on getting that done. They've already done the preliminary where they came out, checked everything out, went through everything, and that was just, you know, a lot of stuff got held up because of COVID-19. A lot of teams were down, stuff like that, which is everywhere. I mean, even to get somebody in here to do a job for us has been hard. Getting people to come and bid a job because they don't, they just don't have a manpower right now.
They just did the bush hogging too. Yes, before they did the drain clearing, they were going to do the bush hogging and that was just.
Well, I mean, it's been at least two years where you haven't done a thing on that. And I'm thinking relying on the county, the county is, they have their own challenges.
It is, but I mean, we're saving money. We have an IGA with enough, it's good. I think it's a good opportunity.
But it hasn't happened though either, has it? And that's my point is you need to be self-independent in a way that you manage your own situation. Obviously, you want to save money where you can, but several of those things were 100% plugged up. I mean, that should be, hair should be on fire somewhere, red flags should be waving. We need to do something. And that's my thought on that. And the last one was just to repeat from my previous conversation about the capital improvement. I was reading the capital improvement program that you submitted, a week ago, two weeks ago, whenever that was, and it talked about sidewalks. And the sidewalks were supposed to be done by 2022.
I think we discussed.
Before that, it was 2017. And it goes back, I think, six years.
What is it? We have 990 something thousand dollars worth of SPOSS projects that we've got in the next four years. And those sidewalks are on it. I don't see them getting pushed. I mean, I don't, they're solid plans, so got a good council here. They've, they've looked at it. They've agreed to all of it and it's in our.
Right, it's on there, just, it's just not moving forward. As I was trying to make it move forward.
Well, I think you'll see some. We, so, so far, we've spent 550-plus thousand dollars worth of SPOSS dollars in the last two and a half years. We've got another 600 and something that we're looking at to spend this year before the year's end, and then we have 900,000 plus on the book.
Well, that's another question I have.
Things have started to move.
The capital plan that we looked at as a drag didn't have any of the finished, well, just 700 to 800,000 dollars that we're going to spend over here on Kennesaw to do the sidewalk and to do the drainage issue, this project here.
Okay.
That should be in. I mean, in other words, if you let that off the capital improvement program, that means all the rest of the numbers are not valid.
No, it's already been encumbered and already started paying for it. So that project's basically complete.
But does it show up on the capital improvement plan?
It was prior.
Yeah.
Prior to that one that you've seen. That, that's going forward because that's already been encumbered and already been basically expended. So going forward, that you won't see, on that one that you see.
So the previous capital improvement, would it show that money?
Yes, it did.
Oh, okay.
And the only thing that you should see on Kennesaw Avenue is, it should be now the paving for Kennesaw Avenue.
Yeah, right.
So that's what should be on there. That's what should be left.
I would like to say something very positive about the council and the mayor and all the stuff that you've done is I see the Rebecca Lodge building almost disappearing as well as the famous sheriff, he saw this go across the street. So I hope that, I mean, good job.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else have anything for this meeting? Do you want me to do the phone call? Go ahead and let Kim Barr come up. That's the bar, but it's fair, sorry.
It's okay. No worries. Okay, so from our last meeting, I didn't get a chance to thank all of the volunteers who helped with the Easter celebration, and I wanted to name out everybody who helped out with that to make it a wonderful celebration. And then a huge thank you to the city council members who attended. David Hamby, Nathan Hamby, William Taylor, and James Queen were all there. Thank you for coming and offering your support. And then I wanted to thank Kelsey for helping out with the pre-event support. And then, of course, I wanted to recognize Marisonia Green for helping out so much and then donated prize baskets and provided overall direction and coordination along with additional volunteer support from family in the grill and just helped out so much. Your passion for the city is appreciated very much. And then William Taylor helped out with Easter egg stuffing and setup and breakdown. Very much appreciated. Danny Morris from Trinity Church coordinated a group of volunteers to cook hot dogs and hamburgers for the event, also provided DJ, face painting, picture booth, and helped out with general setup, which was amazing. And then I also wanted to recognize Laurel Lake Community Committee Alyssa Marathus for Easter egg stuffing, morning setup and event support, along with Leslie Hutcherson for some event coordination support. Wayne Tippins and Chris Lee from the Masonic Lodge came out and did a great job helping us set up tents and other morning setup for that event. Chad Jenkins from ICG donated a large generator to power the bounce houses and DJ tent. And then we had other volunteers. Jody Chapman donated marketing support and had her three boys and another, one of their friends help with egg stuffing. We had, we did 2,035 eggs for the event, yes. And then Stacy Taylor helped out with the Easter egg stuffing and the event support. And Sue Cochran donated some Easter egg baskets and 200 eggs and helped with stuffing eggs too. Thank you so much, Sue. And then we got the Cherokee County Fire Services Sergeant Josh German and firefighter Terry Randall drove, came out with their fire truck and gave out hats to the children. And then we had a vendor, and even though she, she was part of the budget for it, she was great. She was wonderful. Gillian Gearing, she did from Rascal G Rentals. The bounce houses were great, huge hit. So I look forward to other celebrations in the future and just wanted to thank everybody for helping and your support.
I do appreciate it. I want to take this time too to just say thank you for everything that you put into it, all the running around, getting things done. It was, it was definitely a success and you helped make that. I look forward to working with you on our, our moving out.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right. Take that as a no. And we'll move on to approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 11th, 2022?
I'll make a motion.
James?
Second.
Dave, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the work session minutes for April 19th, 2022?
Make a motion to approve.
Nathan?
Second.
Dave, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. All right. Department reports. Lieutenant Downey, would you like to come share?
I would. I'd first like to say thank you to everyone who attended the town hall. We probably have the least amount of population in this area when it comes to Cherokee, but we have the largest town hall gathering across any of the other precincts in the county. So I greatly appreciate that. Mayor, thank you for the kind words and everyone else that attended. But I think it just speaks volumes of how much we care about where we live, which makes my job a whole lot easier. With the crime report, the only thing we had, and we took care of this problem on the way up here, is we've had two teens that have been riding from Nelson Ridge to Nelson Oaks on motorcycles. And I received a couple complaints about it on my way up here. I drove into the neighborhood and on the whole, they come on the motorcycle. So I got to visit some mom and dads and a teenager that I think that will take care of that problem itself. With the weather warming up, I do want to caution everyone, yeah, we do live in a small community, and like the sheriff said in our town hall, we want you to think you're in Mayberry, but that also depends on what we do and what you guys do as a community. But when you start seeing individuals or vehicles that don't belong in your area, please call. Make sure you lock your doors at night because the trend is across every county around Metro Atlanta, when the weather gets nice, we get people that want to wander in our neighborhoods. And they're going to do it, and I make the statement of evil seeks darkness, okay? And so they're going to do it while we're asleep and things like that. Lock your car doors, that'll keep people from going in them. If you have any valuables in your vehicle, put them where they're not going to be seen. And that's just some safety tips for everyone, including those that live in Pickens. But when you see things out of place, please don't hesitate to call. We do this job for a reason, and that's to keep the community safe. And you guys, like I said in our town hall, are the eyes and ears for us. So don't hesitate, don't think you're bothering us, but just call 911 when you see problems like that. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is mayor's report. Go ahead and start off with resignations. We received a resignation from Martha Tipton today. She's taken a job at Piedmont. We wish her well, and she seems excited about it. She said her hours conflicted without meaning. So we hate to lose Martha. She was definitely an asset and she'll be missed. Next, we have, we have a resignation also from the maintenance guy, Jackie Plumley. Jackie has accepted another position with a substantial raise of benefits. So we wish him well and well. We need to be waiting for another maintenance guy to replace him, and we'll start putting that in the, in the Pickens progress and get that moving. In the meantime, my suggestion is to see if Ricky and, could use maybe Steven and his son to help out in the interim until we get things rolling anyway. So is anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, good deal. I wanted to bring to your attention a hole on Kennesaw and School Street. I believe when you're coming down Kennesaw and you're turning onto School Street, it's on the right-hand side, and it looks like somebody may have put some concrete there for water to run off, but there's a hole about this big around. We've put some cones out there. When you look down in the hole, it is like a hole with about this much earth is all that's covered. So if somebody with a heavy something comes across that, their tires is going to go straight in it. There's a pipe that appears to be maybe, I don't know, about this big around. Water, it's washed all the way around it and it's washed up under the road. So I know that that's your line, Nathan, David, if you could just take a look at that.
Right in here? Which side of the road is that on?
It's on the right side of the road as you're turning onto School Street from Kennesaw.
And made it covered in there going all the way across.
Well, the problem that I see is, is that there, it's, it's washed out really bad and it goes up under there. And so I asked Kelsey to see, would it be the DOT we brought in to take a look at that and see what kind of damage we have?
Contact the county maybe.
My only concern is, is it's right there at Kennesaw Avenue, and I don't know how much wash is under there. So, well, we just found that, so we'll get them notified tomorrow. Website meeting, I have a meeting scheduled with, here at the city hall tomorrow regarding the website with Keith Johnson to go over the website and all the particulars. Making sure that we, we're able to function, the city's able to function with that website on our own until we can get somebody to, to come in and take, take it over. Right now, it's just posting, we'd be posting our city pertinent information such as our agendas, our updates to our projects, the capital budget, the capital improvement budget once approved, the budget, the city budget once it's approved. So, so those are the things I'm looking at now.
So what's the, can I have garbage revealed and stuff like that?
Not yet.
You can pay it through the NelsonPay.com website. You just can't access your account and check and verify the balances.
And it's, it's probably not that, that we won't be able to have that feature. It's just.
It needs to link to our software.
Yeah.
It's not linked.
It's going to have to link to Assist, and, and we'll have to have somebody that can program that to do it. Somebody that probably works with cities and their websites. I don't know who Ball Brown's using, but I have reached out to them to see. I have reached out to, over to, well, let's go to see who they're using. Because if you go on their websites, I went and looked at a few of them, all their stuff is on there. So they're using somebody. So I thought maybe we'd get some names of some folks and then go that route and just get some information. I'll bring it back to you guys.
Have you contacted Cherokee County, Pickens County?
Have not contacted the counties yet about their websites. Went a little bit smaller. I know that there, there's no telling who they use, but I imagine they use for what they do on their website versus what we would do on ours. Ours is such a smaller scale. I was, I reached out to like Ball Brown and to, and we could probably reach out to Pickens.
Okay, it's because the tax assessor.
Okay. Who does it? Miranda.
I mean, they got the same account as.
Well, yeah, it doesn't make sense because what he's saying, you can go and check your part, your tax partial checks and balance for Pickens and not right on Mayberry.
Okay, let's check.
I was going to contact the school as people that do their websites, and I was going to check into that.
If you get a name, that would be great. I know it gets kind of crazy, so if you could get a name, I don't mind calling. Next up is playing on our Kennesaw Avenue project is almost coming to a wrap. We, I did meet with the Josh from the county, talked with him about the header wall on the far side of the Kennesaw Avenue, which if you're leaving here, it would be on the right-hand side, and some wash that I seen there. I have a meeting with Barry next Friday. I had a family emergency that came up for Thursday, this Thursday, and I couldn't meet with him. So it'll be next Friday. We'll go over that with him and see what needs to happen, and then we'll work back with the county to make sure that we shore that up really well. The planning on Kennesaw, the planting on Kennesaw Avenue is almost complete. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but it's looking pretty good. And any questions on that? I shouldn't have been asking you that, so.
No. Do you know what time you're going to make with Barry on Friday? It fits right in or something?
Yeah. I said 11:30. Yeah, I said it for 11:30, so.
I think I'm a bit ready too.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to touch base on is playground equipment. So I made a couple of phone calls and things have just really gone up in the last two years. So with that said, I would like to make a recommendation that we give Michael Kidd a call since he is doing our overall master park plan and have him look at that area and maybe get with you, I've got your drawing still, and have him do us a drawing and what will fit in that space.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. And then after we do that, he can do a drawing for us. And then, because I have a feeling that we're, you're looking at 40, $50,000, and that's on the very low end, very low end.
Well, that's what I was wondering if the basic design's there. There's not a whole lot to it.
Yeah.
I actually sat down the other day and wrote up basically what would be in a bid for it. We just set up like a price, and then anybody who wants to bid for it, they can measure and see what size. Well, actually, I mean, I think we figured, not knowing exactly what to do, about 35 by 35 on the square footage, and they can make recommendations along with the bid for equipment. But it's hard to tell with those pamphlets I laid back in there.
Yeah, they already is. That's why I, I know Michael Kidd is a piece of park planner, so if he could give us a couple of options, we're paying for it anyway. If he could give us a couple of options, and he could probably do that relatively quickly, just we have the plot, the plaque for that piece of property, get him to give us a couple of recommendations. You guys take a look at it and then see if that's what you want. Then we can contact some of these folks and say, hey, you know, we can, we can actually put it up a bid. So, I mean, that, that's my recommendation. I didn't realize that we were looking, I mean, that, that's.
After looking through those booklets, yeah.
Well, I called a few people and it's just like your basic.
$50,000, $60,000 just on the one piece of equipment on the floor.
Exactly. Well, that, and, and little tax is really high anyway.
Well, that's really why I was saying if we set a, like a cap at, you know, the average of that, somewhere between probably 50 to 70, put it up and then they can take, any of your suppliers are going to have up and walk out there with a tape measure and say, okay, you've got exactly 36 by 30. Here's a list of pieces of equipment that'll fit in there. Any of the suppliers can do that, probably on their computer.
So you're suggesting just go ahead and do a bid based on the?
Figure out about what we think our cap price would be to stay at.
Do the suppliers not have a deck of designs?
They, they do have them, yeah, they do.
Yeah, they should provide that at no cost just to know, you know. Okay, we've got these three pieces of equipment that are in your price range and your size range, then you look at the bid and go, okay, we like that, we'll go with this company.
So we can set up a bid, we can go ahead and set up the bid.
I'll get you the, because we'll have to get a close estimate on like the fencing. The grading's not really going to be a lot. But I sat down and basically broke it out into pieces we need, grading, this stuff, this stuff, whatever.
Okay.
With the wedding and everything. My oldest just got married and with the wedding and everything, it's been a madhouse. I just got to get it typed up and sent to you.
You're good. Whenever you can get that done, then we can get a bid package together.
You'll have it before the next meeting. Or I can get it to you sooner than that.
If you can do it, if we're all in agreement to, to go ahead and put this out to bid, we'll do a bid package. We can review it.
We just need to set like a cap price, a target price for the piece of equipment itself and.
We can review it.
Actually, number of benches, swings, whatever, tables. What type of bench in there, bring that up, yeah, isn't it?
Yeah, I was thinking, like I drew up there to say privacy on the shared wall with the house and everything, then go with vinyl coated black chain and do the rest of it because it'll last longer. But we need to probably get a better estimate of footage.
So we'll go to the bid package on, at the June meeting, and then we'll put it out for bid right after the meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
We decide what we want to say is like, this is the top end, this is a piece of equipment. And they should be able to say, well, we've got five pieces of equipment that fits your size and that price or whatever.
I know with it being over $50,000, there's some paperwork and stuff like that. And I, like I said, I just don't want to, I don't want to do it the right way. I don't just go out there and trust them. You know, I know we, so we have the capital, correct, to spend it if we wanted to do it out of our, our capital gap. And that's how we said we were going to do it, wasn't it? Did we say we were going to do it out of city's funds? Or did we say we're going to do it out of capital or SPOSS?
It's going to be SPOSS.
Okay, if we have SPOSS.
We have park upgrades.
Okay.
We have the trail reserving, trail resurfacing is currently out for bid.
So once they do that, they'll, they can do us a drawing so we can, it'll all be all on campus. We need to make sure that they do a drawing in there so that'll have to be submitted. All right. So that covers the playground equipment. The, I know that Kelsey put out a thank you for Hulk and Grading, an amendment. I have called the, I called the GMA, also found out what we needed to do for the amendments, if we needed to, what we needed to do. And I found out from our charter. So here's the deal with, with the amendment, just so everybody's on the same page. The concrete for up here at the police building, because of the weight of it, was an extra 3,000, what was it? $3,600 in dump fees. So the other thing is, is if we tear down the marble wall, say we take the marble wall, they're, they're in sections. What do you guys think about having them, it was $3,653 for.
In addition.
In addition to what he quoted for just the dump fees. And our dump fees are going up, and we need to make sure that we include that in our budget, just apply higher.
Did you see them, that concrete?
It was like.
I did.
It was, you mopped.
He had to bring in another machine to break it up to get that machine to carry it.
That marble is my concern, but if we were to take and save the marble, I mean, I know it was part of the gym, the gymnasium wall. If you save that, we could maybe utilize that marble in our, if we did like a. No, what was it? Was it that thing you were talking about?
Well, you could do like.
Amphitheater type stuff.
Amphitheater, whether it's seating, I mean, it's a fairly decent size for.
Yeah, it's about, it's a good, and I mean, the sections are like this long. So we just have to have them take it down and, and place it somewhere and not, so it doesn't get broken.
And we are to do is, man, keep it from getting broke. It's old.
Some of it will probably break.
Might be able to salvage some, some of them. We, we thought about maybe giving, getting Evan to take it back, but Evan. but Evan can't do anything dirty through his, through his machines. He said, uh, tear them up.
Yeah.
So.
And the safety inspector's here today too.
Go ahead and talk about that some.
We had to say, we have safety inspection every year. The, Steve, I can't remember his last name from the GMA, because our insurance stuff was here today. And he came in initially to give ideas for the community building, realized it had been torn down. But then pointed out the walls and said that they needed to come down. And I told him that was something we had been discussing. And it was just the fact that it had been brought up by the insurance company. So.
I guess.
So I'll open it up for discussion. You start with Nathan?
I'm not comfortable with taking that down unless we're gonna immediately fix it back. Whatever we're gonna put in place on it.
So what we had talked about was if we took the wall down, we would slope the wall and slope the stuff. And then you start out with a clean slate. So if he wants to put something back there, if you come, from what I understand, if you come, if you back it up a little bit and slope it down, you still maintain the integrity of the ball field for right now that's there.
You're talking about at the marble wall, but at the.
At that marble wall, you have to slope it too.
Where you're talking about, I mean, this ground.
It's six, it's five and a half feet in one area and it's six, what was it in the other? It's six, some few in the other. We just, I went down with the tape measure and looked at it and, and measured it all.
I mean, is it planned on bringing dirt in to re-slope that or?
Yeah, ought to be. There's no way that.
He said he would re-slope it.
So.
They plan on going up that side of the sidewalk, don't they?
I just, I mean, my perspective, um, if he tears the wall out and then re-grades it, and then we hire somebody to put another wall in, they're gonna have to dig that. I mean, we're gonna have to pay him.
I don't think you, would you want another wall there?
I mean, if you could re-slope the whole thing and just not have nothing there, I mean, if you wanted to have something there, you're gonna need a wall. That's all I'm talking about it.
You're gonna have to have some wall to save that slab too.
Or the, the wall's gonna be used.
Yeah, you said you could save the back end of the slab and, and if you sloped it off, you would lose, how much did he say? Maybe a third of the slab. But that's the end that's got all the drainage and all the pipes and stuff in it anyway. It's its front end. So you still have, you still have a huge piece of that, um, of that concrete.
That's the old out, who's loose on, on that cheap cop slab.
I'm just wondering about.
The park planner originally recommended using part of it as like a pavilion base and part of it as a basketball thing. Just to see if it was something that was going to be.
But if we go back with a, if we go back with a full basketball court, like what, what we're talking about, do a full basketball court. Per Mike, he says it's, I mean, with root design, he says it's probably gonna be across the street anyway. It's not gonna be right there. And only because of the water saturation. You could still leave that slab, a portion of that slab though, and use it as a pavilion building. Nice, and have a nice one. The slab's already bored.
I know, um, the asphalt evidence, you know, water lines under that.
Evan was down there with Bo. We met him down there the other day. So he's been kept at a leak with everything.
It runs right between the basketball, go, the basketball end of the building. There's a.
You can actually see some.
You can actually see it.
He sleeps on that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, one of those things. Sorry, didn't let you finish.
All right. It just sounds like we're tearing a building and a wall down and just making a hillside out of it.
Well, you're, you're really, you're really just giving a clean slate for it to come back. That wall's not gonna come down, whether it comes down today or it comes down in six months. You won't save that wall when you refurb that area and you turn it into something different. So the, the problem is, is the marble is not stable. They hit it with a, with a, um, with the lime work and it's not the, a whole piece of it off, like a good chunk. Just it's, one piece is completely gone. And then where they backed into it, I guess with the lime word actually. So you're gonna start with, you're gonna have to start fresh anyway. I guess is my thing. And if you've got something and you're willing to do it now for ten thousand dollars, you said if you did both of them, it's better than, it's better than putting a bid out, paying for the bid, paying for somebody else to remove it. And I seriously doubt, I do grading and stuff and pay for it all the time for my sites and I don't think you're gonna get it for ten thousand dollars to tear it down.
This was only because the machinery was already on site.
They said ten thousand for the marble and the timber.
That's it, they're done.
And that's.
Why all the machines are out here.
Calling off everybody, marble.
That's why, if you want, wanna keep any of the marble, we can.
I don't think you're benefiting if I'm not getting.
If we pile it up, it could lay a hazard on the back line.
My thoughts too.
They're all different sizes.
Yeah.
Don't, don't get, get enough marble pile to slip in or something.
Yeah, and the way that it is now and it, with the rain, there's marble pieces sticking up and they're jagged. If somebody falls off there, it's a hazard anyhow, so.
When Bo that also pointed out something to a lot of walls, the building's connected to that current wall on the back side.
Yeah.
It may be an issue as they start doing it clean up and they start pulling some of that down.
From a, from a, um, from a perspective with what we have here at the city, we're, we're all in our rights to do an amendment. If we wanna purchase exceeding, um, we've got ten thousand there. But as far as the, the sploß project goes, you can do an amendment to, to a project. And Laura, do you, can you talk to them a little bit more?
I'd have to look at the.
Okay.
Contacted Jeff about this in advance, but I'd have to look at the ordinance.
I actually contacted, um, Kayla at, at, um, at the GMA. She's a sploss attorney. So she, and she, that's what she said. She says, you know, we, I think our piece here, it says the city reserves the right to accept or reject any and all covered, uh, items covered in the request or portions thereof waived, um, formalities, re-advertised or takes such steps deemed necessary and in the best interest of the city. We want to take a look at that. That's all.
So this is Nelson's?
Mm-hmm, it is. And then here's the other page.
That's the page pack.
Yeah, that's, and this is our. That's for the bid packet. That just has page three, the big packet. And then that's all.
Let's see, or you know, either it's slow, you know, then put some kind of a, a, a.
Bid and contract documents may contain provisions authorizing the insurance of, uh, change orders without necessary, net, without the necessity of additional requests for bids or proposals within the scope of a project when the appropriate, when appropriate or necessary in the performance of the contract. Change orders may not be used to evade the purpose of this article. And this is.
So is it something that was, this is something that was already bid and this is just a change?
Yeah, it's just an amendment. It's just a change.
Well, this, this right here is an add-on.
It's an amendment is what it is. It's just an amendment for the safety of, of the thing. It's, it is fucking add, you can call it add-on, but, but the way sploß looks at it is it's an amendment. So it's an addition to.
Yeah.
So.
But this was not bid on, is what I'm saying.
It was, and it doesn't, and according to.
It'd be like a change order.
Yeah, yeah, it's all of it. It doesn't have to.
Within the scope of. So, I, I mean, I, the thing is, if it's, if it's necessary to the performance of the project, it was already bid.
Yeah.
So if it's something that has come up through the performance of an already bid project as a necessity, um, then, then it's permitted. You can't do it just because you wanna add something on. But if it's become necessary because of what has already been bid.
Yeah.
Then it's fine to do it as a change order to the initial bid.
Yeah.
So as long as it's become a necessity because of the existing bid.
Have you backed that up? Somebody was to.
Well, that's why they've added, I mean, you know, change orders not to be used to evade the purposes of this article. So you're not supposed to just add things into a project that are not a necessary part of the project through this. Those have to go through the bid voting process, um.
And this would also, the other thing about it is, is the amendment, if, if it saves the city money in the long run too, you can still, I mean, if, if, and it's all connected. It's all right there connected. That was the part that Kay was telling me.
Okay, I think it's the, the necessity for completion of the, or necessary for performance of whatever has already been bid. So if it's become necessary because of the work that's been done, um, then it would fall under that as a change order rather than as a new, a new bid and a new proposal.
Yeah. And I think he knows that he's not gonna come out of this making a lot of money because he already knows what the dump fees are gonna be to dispose of that marble. So.
Actually a lot of money.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know.
So what's the?
Well, the initial part, just to be the wood wall, like if his equipment wasn't here and he came out and stood it out, it was like, I mean, five hundred dollars. Just the wood wall on that one side. So this was like, his equipment's already there.
What's the ten and what was it?
So if you do both at the same time, he's doing it for ten thousand. If he, if you, if you're only gonna do the one, it's six thousand.
And if you don't want it done while the stuff's here, then these.
It'll have to just be bid out.
It'll be bid out and it'll be completely different.
So he's asking for ten to do both.
Yes.
And that's including dirt, grading.
I don't know if any, I do not know if any of this is dirt.
It includes.
He had to know that.
He said that it includes the, um, slope.
Grading.
The, the grading and the slope of the land.
And seating strong.
He may have to bring in.
He figured he's gonna get it to where it's at least seating strong.
Yeah.
I would like to see that wall stayed where it's at, but when we go back to putting a wall in.
I don't think that that wall is part of Michael Kidd's thing.
I think it just means a wall where the wall is.
So what do you mean?
Well, I mean, my wall, it's really a wall.
Well, he does. He does. That's not the thing. Are you talking about the, the concrete wall? I mean, the marble wall? Are you talking about the?
Marble wall.
The marble wall?
Yeah. You know, when it loses flat land.
You don't, I mean, you don't wanna give the whole piece of land to just have this out there. It's what I'm, what I'm talking about.
Running out of space.
Yeah, we don't have a lot, for sure.
Yeah, it would look better if a wall went back there.
I think it looks to me like it's gradable where you could end up with probably five or six foot high wall.
Yeah.
That wall actually, but marble wall, it's actually about three foot outside low where it slopes up to the top of it. You take and have it grade, you lose another foot, foot and a half just with that. So that's helpful anyway. And you come back about three foot away and it's, it's like swell.
Yeah.
When we, when we get all this stuff took out, I mean, if this goes through, can we prioritize that area?
Yeah.
As like.
Yeah, you can.
The next project.
When Michael comes, um, he's supposed to, is the next piece.
He's working on, probably all the data from the survey, so we should.
And then that's, that's something you guys will decide which phase you wanna do first. The thing about this piece of property over here is, um, and it's a work in process because it's not just the wall. The wall, of course, is a safety issue. But when you get behind Rebecca Lodge, there's places where you just barely need in it. I mean, it just, you just sink. I felt so out of my face out there.
The only issue still is we're gonna have somebody come in and take out the old basketball court too. I mean, it's, it's really, it'll save it if we have that.
No, but I mean, if you're doing it in phases, at least they have something until, until we do that, right? So that's, I wouldn't take that out until we, till we have something. I mean, that's only, I've measured it. It's about, it's about that thick. So.
All the dirt from the basketball court area can be moved down and used where the rock wall is because it was originally a bank there was a mine.
Yeah. It's probably gonna get destroyed getting that, when that timber wall comes down too.
Yeah.
Biggest big track along.
They should be, we'll get that at the top.
Yeah. Um, I know that we have that, um, that piece behind the Rebecca Lodge that, to go in there and clean that out and rip rap it and make it look a little bit better. So I guess really just take a look at where we've got those things positioned at on the capital improvement as to how we need to do things. I think that would need to be done first and have that land graded or whatever before you. I think if you grade the land and you, that piece back there, before you do that storm drain, we're just, it's gonna happen. What's going on will just continue to happen because it's already in front of there.
So you, that's gonna come first to the storm drain as far as right there, up, up behind the Rebecca Lodge. That's the problem, cause you're looking at that timeline. Or is it gonna go together?
I think really asking, I, I think maybe doing together, but we need to just talk to Michael Kidd and get a recommendation on it. And, and even Barry, cause Barry's gonna have to, when he meets, he'll just talk about, um, hillside and, and, um, Cherokee and, and then into that, underneath the railroad track and where that lady's house is at, the hole there. I mean, that's a hole. That's what we dubbed that as one phase now, cause they all put together. So, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done, no doubt. So. And I think maybe we just take, get, get a recommendation from Barry, get a recommendation from Michael and then sit down and just put our heads together and see the best, best way to phase it out. David, you got a lot of knowledge where it comes to grading and stuff and how that end works.
We need to, you know, have to turn, look and see how, and do that, the edges on, about to.
Yeah.
And then get Bo, Bo Angel to make rhythm too for our machine.
Um, I think he might've talked to, cause Bo met with us. I think, I don't know if it was the same time. I don't think Barry was there that day, but we have, I have given on each other's financial conversations. So I wanted to make sure they were in the loop as far as what happened on the property.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be on their process.
Yeah, so they were, yeah, they were being kept in it.
Okay. Um, any other discussion on this before we, before we go on the amendment? We have anything?
Hearing what the attorneys represented over said, I don't know if we'll qualify because the other project hasn't caused this. This has been there the whole time, unclear.
It does have.
That's appearing that.
What was the initial bid approval for?
The demolition of, the demolition of the building, but because the wall is an extension of it and it butts up to it.
The building was built on.
The marble wall could be affected by retaining the wood wall would not be. They're totally.
That's been a problem for.
This has been an ongoing problem.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, if the timber wall's not in any way connected to the building, so the, you said the marble one does vote up to it, that could potentially be caused by, or, you know, if there's been damage to it from taking down the building or it's a safety hazard from taking down the building and now it has to come down. If the timber wall is completely unconnected and has not been affected by the other project, then it would, it'd be more of an add-on. Um, it'd be more of a different thing than a change order. So I, I think that's kind of the, the fine line that you're walking on this one.
So you're gonna do the marble one as part of it.
You could do the marble one as fa, part of it and if he bid the other one, or not, didn't bid it, it'd be under ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. So we don't have to bid that, we don't have to bid the wood wall. We just have to approve it.
Yes, but you'd wanna, he would preferably do those two separate estimates.
Okay.
Um, that he as a part of the initial bid, i- i- if it truly is necessary that the marble wall come down because of whatever happened with the building coming down, then that would be a change order to the initial bid. And then he'd want a separate estimate for the timber wall. And if that comes in under your limit, then you don't have to bid it.
Yeah. And, and that's what, and that's what one of the things that Kay said, cause she says it's, when you pull that off, when you, so the concrete butts right up to the marble. When you pull that off, it's gonna pull marble off. And at that point, that is the highest end of that marble wall. So it's slope, it's, it gets, you know.
So you're potentially causing damage to that wall.
You are gonna cause damage.
Or structural instability to it.
And the problem is, is that it's so tall that if somebody falls off there, it's, it is a huge hazard.
Well, I think that, that it's connected to the building makes it appear more as something that would be a change order.
Yeah.
Um, and the potential damage to it, the potential safety hazard. If the, I'm not envisioning this exact area, but if the timber wall is completely separate and hasn't been structurally affected by the building coming down. I mean, if it's fallen over because things shifted when the building came down, that's one thing. But if it's just as it has been, um, it would be less of a change order to the building.
So we would do an amendment for the, so basically we would do an amendment because the, the marble wall's attached to the building. Is the way that it is. I mean, literally it's in front and then we've attached concrete to it and build a building off of it. So if, that would be an amendment and then this one here, the.
It would just be a separate.
That'd be a separate.
Just a separate. And because it's under the six thousand, it'd be under ten thousand.
It's kinda like he did the sidewalks when he was doing the catch bases and then caught the other sidewalks that were cracked. And it was like, hey, we already got a concrete truck here. If you wanted to, they'd be like.
So, so for, for keeping us, for keeping us on the right track. So we're just having, we were just having, give us two separate bids.
Two separate bids.
One amendment and one bid.
When there's a change order to the existing bid for the marble wall, since it's connected and one bid is just his estimate for, um, the wood wall.
Okay.
And presumably that's under your limit.
It is. Of course, I think I sent it.
Unless the price goes way up and it puts it on the front of his page.
Yeah. And it's, it's under the ten. So we, we're safe with both of them. Which I think my thing is, is if we, if we push it out and we end up bidding it, we're gonna pay for bidding it. We're gonna have to pay for it to go out to bid. You're gonna have to get the, you're gonna go through all the bid process for, for literally. for, for literally a, you know, $10,000 job where we can get it done at $6,000 or $5,000 if we do both of them at the same time. Just don't see anybody coming out and doing it for less than that, based on the, the process we have to go through.
Is your language exceeding $10,000 or $10,000 above?
Exceeds $10,000.
So you could approve it as is, not to exceed $10,000.
Yeah.
But, but I think that, I think that you're correct that the one that seems to actually be a potential change order is the marble wall. Whereas the other one, if it has not been affected or is not necessary to do something with it because of the building, it, it's more like a separate item.
Yeah, and can be done because it's under the 10. Yeah, that was what, that was what I was just from clarification on to make sure that we were, we were legal. So. I'll make a note if it goes through. You guys wanna make a, you wanna take a vote on it? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Holcomb grading, two separate invoices, one for the demo and removal of the timber wall for $5,000 and an amendment to the demo for the marble wall for $5,000? Should I do them separately?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do the, let's do the amendment first.
Now, we've done and voted on the wooden wall. In fact, did.
No, we didn't.
Not heard it out. I thought we, no, we approved rebuilding it a long time ago.
Can I get a motion to approve the removal of the marble wall that's connected to the Rebecca Lodge as, as an amendment for $5,000?
I'll make a motion.
James?
Say.
All in favor?
If this is, won't include all grading, all seed, all the dirt work.
We don't know if it includes, we don't know if it includes bringing in dirt. It was just whatever was on there.
M. Towne told me that, the other day, that if I needed dirt, he'd give it to me. So if we, if it's not included, we'll get the dirt, but he, he told me we'd give it to me if we needed it.
That was one that I was down there, we were talking about, so we.
There's the scripture, it's got gray, seed and straw, so I figured you'd have to put it back at least two, one, to meet that.
Yeah, and that's what I would have seen. It would be slightly different than that.
I just don't want to come to the next meeting and say he needs $5,000.
No, I understand. So not to exceed $5,000?
But it's only going to be the price of both for a group. Because if only the marble wall is approved, then it's gonna be six.
That's correct per his bid, so if y'all approve both separately, then.
Nothing to change on, is it?
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's, if we're only gonna do one.
Okay, so all in favor? unanimous, James and Maitland, accepted. Can I get a motion to approve the demo of the timber wall, the basketball court, hay and seed and regrade, $5,000?
Michael, I'm gonna approve.
Next, all in favor? Yeah, that's okay. Miranda, I think that's all I have for me. Miranda, if you would be so kind as to go over the financial review.
All right, we'll go over the bank balances and then, of course, we're gonna talk about the budget going into the natural progress budget. All right, general fund balance is $868,799. The special reserve fund number three is $39,295. Splot four, Old Cherokee is $400, $431,228. Splot two, which is the Old Pickens, is $400, $401,920. Splot five, which is the new Cherokee, is $709,116. And the cash reserve fund is at $166,683. Pickens Splot 2020 is the new Pickens, is $492,700. And then the CARES Act grant balance is $83,386. And behind that, you'll have the reports of your, all the bank statements as well as the recent check.
The CARES grant, I would, I was talking with a couple of folks on the council about it, but we, I've done some checking. In order to give back to the community, we've got four churches and one, in one school. And even if it's private, it doesn't matter. I know some of these churches, due to COVID and things like that, have had a downturn in, in folks and, and dollars and things like that because people out of work and stuff, so as far as tired of things. They've got some projects that need to be done. I believe Vivian and Anthony, they said that they had a project for structural that they had, that they needed to do on theirs. I know this one over here needs a steeple. And then there's a cemetery project at Bethesda, and I'm not sure about Nelson Baptist yet. I would like for you guys to entertain the thought of maybe either giving $2,500 to $5,000 to each one of those churches and the schools to help with the cost of, of projects that they have going on. This is being done, county, county's partnering with the school system to give back to the school system to do things that way. It, it is, we don't have any businesses, so we don't have any businesses to prop up, so to speak, you know, like.
Well, we can cross this too, if we do, it's something we still have to track, like we still have to.
We have, they have to give us a project. We'd have to report the project back to the, to the state and.
They opened up a lot of stuff when they did the final goal and.
And what was the thing on the 10 million? It was, I mean.
For lost revenue.
Yeah, lost revenue, which we don't really have lost.
It made us report that stuff.
Yeah, we don't really have lost revenue, but when we went in to do our paperwork, it wouldn't take anything but that.
Well, it took the other two, but it still made me report this lost revenue.
Yeah, still made it report this lost revenue, so it's a good way to, to give back to the community. I think total, we got 700 and, what was it, 705? Total?
It was 52214, because each tranche was like, was it two, 1124 each? Here it was 10, I think it was 211 each, so I think the next one would be 211, so it was like, no, it was more than that, because the total's five something.
Yeah, the first one was two something and then it opened up 577,000, it did what?
Total's five something.
Okay.
They give it as a half. I think it was 227. Each, the first tranche was 227, the second tranche was 227. Because it, I think it was like 514 was the total.
So that, that'd be a half a million plus is what it is, and make a note so we can have that information for the next.
I forgot.
We do have, when we have our executive session, if you want to. Anyway, I'd like for you guys to think about that. That's really the only places that we have to give back to the community in the big scheme of things. It's not that much money, but you're looking at, you're looking at 20,000, 25,000, depending on what you end up doing, so.
Who looks over, watch B9 and stuff like that.
We have to report on it, so it's something like, I just did the report on the April 30th.
Somebody else, then they go to.
I'm not getting involved.
No, they have, they would, to basically give us the project and write it out. I mean, it's a business transaction. You get a project, you write it out, they tell us what it is, they show, this is the estimate of how much it is, and then the council will decide on if you wanted to do a $2,500 donation to that, out of the CARES Act, or if you want to do the $5,000. I personally think you should do it all across the board, whatever you give, you do it to everybody.
I've got a number they target.
Yeah, be fair to everybody, so.
And I know some of them have come in and specifically asked if we were doing it because their church is worthy for things, so.
They have the state looking.
Yeah, well, then Yannis Blackwell came in and asked for contractors, because I know they've saved up some money for it. I don't know, I don't know what, how much they've saved up, but I know that the cost of materials has skyrocketed as well. Yes, $8 should apply wood.
So, Miranda, would I do a, would I do a vote on this here to agree to disperse X amount of funds to?
Did they, so, did they have, do they have requirements for what you would need?
They do, yeah.
They have to see it's like a 501(c)(3), whatever that charity thing, like we have to check that, and any churches qualify. And for certain things that we do have to check.
And did you have a list of specific?
Well, we just know of the needs that some of them have. I know the structural need that the church here, where Vivian and I have, I don't know what the name of that church is. I don't know. What is it? Pilgrims?
That's why you may want to get a comprehensive list of places and then, and then vote on what the amount is gonna be.
Yeah.
It'd be better if you had a, a list of the number of places you'd be giving.
And some, some of the churches may not need like an actual project there, because some of them is even open to, to helping with the needs in the community. But it's much easier for a church to help with something like that than it is for a city to help with that because, you know, we don't know all of the needs and it's much easier for them to verify that than for us to verify that.
Okay, I want to ask you, Vivian, your requirements, since you're the queen of that whole CARES Act thing.
Say no.
If you hear the requirements, I don't mind reaching out to.
Is that in your, your article paper?
I need, I need the requirements and I will also give, I'll get with the churches and see if they'll submit.
Sometimes they could.
A project. Okay. Churches.
And the school, and we do have to verify that they're, they're tactically, they're charity status, whatever it is.
Okay.
I'm gonna say those other missing values, that's also done the project.
Done the rest of it, Michael.
Yeah, talk to the county a little bit and that's what they can.
It was just stuff that was popping up when we were doing the report for, on our end, they did the final goal, I think in April. It just, it opened the door for a lot of things that they hadn't previously.
I think you did a little study, making a page in the Cherokee, they could.
Well, the county is already funded now.
The counties are taking teachers off, I think, was it $2,000 bonuses, the ones that didn't qualify. They took out a, the other portion of grants to make sure all the employees were getting funded. There were articles on, they threw on it. So not that I'm opposed to what you're saying, but I know the counties are leaving here.
I mean, kids from this community go picket and Cherokee County schools also.
Yeah.
They could use the lunches or something, stuff like that.
I think the state's doing all their lunches right now. The kids don't even have to have none of their lunches, yeah. It's Cherokee and, and Pickens. Do your kids ever take a lunch?
I couldn't tell you. My wife takes them all the time.
Yeah, well, I know that Lily and Corbin, what I read was none of them were, they don't take a lunch. It's just a thing that they didn't approve. But, but yeah, I'll get this and I'll submit something back to you guys.
I need some church department to need something.
That one?
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's an option too.
The other thing that we found out too, with regards to that CARES Act, is that we, we were eligible to, we were eligible to also, to give all of our employees $1,000 on us and we gave it to send.
That's why you have to send that.
So it was, we did not do, Miranda, we did not do Kelsey, but we did the others. So if you guys, we can talk about that next month, so if that's something that you would like to go ahead and do, we can do that as well. And that's all the things that we found out on our, on our CARES Act stuff, so. All right, now you can finish.
Oh, I'm done. We can move on. We'll be moving on to the proposed budget.
Okay, let's see. Next up is unfinished business. We don't have anything. And then our new business is the proposed budget draft.
Okay, so basically, this is just a pretty limited draft. We have, our revenues have really come in substantial this year. Losses obviously up, which I don't see. I have sent an email saying that Pickens Satsa coming up this year. And I don't see any, there's not been any kind of indications that any of that's gonna change as far as percentages. And then insurance premium tax is substantially up this year. And I look for that to continue to move forwards based off of a percentage and the increase annually. That's where that number comes in. So basically, this budget for the general fund is showing a 3% increase. The only, there's multiple things that, inflation obviously is an issue across the board. Sanitation revenues have increased was another note that I have placed in here. Did increase landfill fees. That's obviously services have, that's just increased. And let's see. The audit come in, it was more this year, only paid for it, the.
Fire taxes.
Fire taxes was more. I went ahead and included that in this.
What was it this year?
It was 116. Well, what it was when they did the amendment, instead of us getting all of the MNO. I can't remember. We didn't get it for all of it. We only got the state exemptions, all the MNO exemptions, we only get the state exemptions, which is a nominal difference, like a difference of like $1,000, because I fought with the county last year about it and even had the auditor in the middle of it. It, when we go back and read it, when the amendment was done, it took it, it changed it from all MNO exemptions to only state exemptions. So it was only a difference like $1,000. But it's also the value, the, the properties has increased, so, you know, the military, we're bringing in more than what we worked for. So the, the set rate that people are paying for the property taxes, that the taxes, the property taxes have increased because of the age of the houses.
It's been from like $92,000 to $116,000 in three years.
It is. You also have property tag, property, or houses in here that were selling for $100,000, that are now selling for $400,000 property taxes.
No, not all.
Is there any raise on it that's yours?
No.
How high does it have to get before we can renegotiate any of that?
It's across the county.
Man, that's like $30,000 in three years on us.
It's a, yeah, it's, it's across the county. It's set for, everybody in the county pays 3.292 right now in the military for the tax rate. But their ISO rating in Cherokee County is much better than it is in Pickens County. And until Pickens take a piece with that, we are much better off dealing with Cherokee because it lowers our homeowners' insurance rates.
Well, maybe that will be long since September.
And they also provide the services, like the fire marshals, like they've already come in and done the safety inspections of all the city buildings. Any of the stuff they found, we've already fixed, the, just like the safety lights on the exit signs, the building numbers were in the wrong place. New fire hydrant extinguishers we put in, but they do, like the building inspections, especially for commercial buildings, they're involved in more down here. There's a lot of stuff that they add in as part of that agreement, building inspections, checking for business licenses and permits and all that.
We don't have to vote on any of this tonight, do we?
No, actually, the purpose of this is for you guys to give me a little bit of feedback. If there's anything that you see that is, is a concern going forward, I know listening to the city events, one of the things I mentioned is I think we should probably include a little bit more funds as far as covering city events.
You know, we, and that would be a mad idea. I talked with Kim Bear and, and we thought, you know, since movies happen so late, gonna be happening late in the afternoon, maybe we just offer popcorn and candy and, you know, drinks that they can buy. We don't, we're gonna do hot dogs and hamburgers and have all that.
It makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, it will, it'll make it a lot easier to clean up, but most people are gonna feed their kids before eight o'clock, for example.
The other thing to, to make is the contingency line, um, to be within what you're saying, within 4%. So that'll be a change going forward. The other thing is, is salaries, if we're going to do cost of living raises or anything like that, I'll have to know, have a little bit of direction on that.
I've got, I've got that scheduled for our executive session this evening, so we should go and give some direction on that.
Yeah, so.
Sanitation department, I mean, where we're gonna make that, across the board.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to increase that for a good bit.
That's another thing. Sanitation base, the fees, the revenue of that actually come in substantially higher this year because nobody's getting free service anymore.
Exactly, so if we're not going to call it mandatory until come January 1, I didn't really factor that in just because of that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if there's anything, if we perceive that, you know, rates are gonna change or anything like that.
The traffic ends to come in, we have, we have given them out. Oh, yes, go take a look at the maintenance building.
That's outside, that's what I.
We have been discussing also, I mean, at some point, we are going to have to increase sanitation fees a little bit. I don't think, I don't know if they've ever been increased. I mean, looking back through the minutes, if anything, I've seen a decrease. Personally, I'd like to keep the senior rate where it is possible and then possibly. increase the regular rate for regular service from $5 a month. And that's still substantially lower than what you're paying the big box companies to come in.
See, people like me, I'll have one bag of rice a week.
That's why, like, we can keep the senior service, all bucks a month. That's, it's great. And Steve, I mean, if somebody gets served or something, they go up and they help them with the trash and you're not gonna get that anywhere else.
Now, my next door neighbor down there in Curves got 20 bags. Take lots of your that. Yeah.
Balance it out. What I'd like to see, what I'd like to see happen here is, everybody take a look at this and then sometime this week, and then email Miranda or text or if there's something, a specific area that you want to talk about. If you guys could do that, that would be awesome. Yeah, or phone call.
Another thing that we brought up on occasion is the compensation for council and mayor. And it can only be done during an election year, but just before that, and it's been recent. The compensation for mayor and council, because right now, it's, it's literally only for the council meetings and it's 50 bucks. And I know there's also meetings that we have, somebody's down here numerous times a month with the county. James is down here. You guys are down here if you have meetings with the county. I can't pay you for those. But it's also, most cities do it where it's a set rate per month. Like you make X amount a month. The mayor for 10 might make a little more. The mayor makes a little more just because there's other obligations that go with it.
Set it towards a salary, isn't it?
Yes, it's set it towards a salary, but it's, it can only be done, be done during a regular election year. It cannot be done during the middle of the year. There's weird rules to it, so just.
You can do it anytime. You just can't, whoever, you can't do it till after it's.
Yeah, there's just weird rules to it.
Can't go into effect until after there's been a vote.
Can't give yourself a raise. You can give a future councilor.
Yes.
That's right.
It just, I mean, it's something that we've kind of discussed off and on, but I do think going forward, everything's moving up this way. There's gonna be more responsibility. There's gonna be more meetings. There's, you know, y'all have to factor that in. But when we were one of the last cities to even pay council members, that if you do it as a salary or, you know, where you can get paid for other meetings, kind of there's days that she has to take off work. There's days that, I mean, James has to take off work, which is his favorite work of all, with the grand baby. But there's days that, you know, stuff like that pops up. I know Williams come in, David, Nathan, you know, that, just food for thought. So if we kind of look at what other small cities are doing for the future, might just plan for something down the line.
Okay, thank you, Council. And then the next up, it's gonna be our executive session. Can I get a motion to move to executive session?
Michael, motion to move to executive session.
And second, James, all in favor?